Hello, welcome.
Yes, so we, uh...
Uh, today is April 16th, Tuesday, seven o'clock. That must mean it's time for our second in a row of our joint council, school committee budget hearings. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Please rise and join us.
(inaudible) the United States of America, and two republics, which stands one nation, one God, and the soul, the liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please take the roll?
(inaudible) President Collins.
Here.
(inaudible) Vice President Dick Cruz.
Here.
(inaudible) Housewoman Gelsa.
Here.
Housewoman McNamara. Here.
Housewoman Gail.
Here.
Thank you. So we have a couple items tonight. The first is the public hearing involving both the town council and the school committee. Then, sort of, the second part of the evening will be a work session just for the town council to let people know what's happening. Since we do have more on the agenda tonight, I'm going to try to be a little more rigorous with the time allotment for each speaker and just giving people fair warning when we do get to the public hearing. If you spoke last night, please let other people get up and speak tonight first before you get a chance. All right. Would that, Rob, do you want to give sort of the same table?
Sure. Actually, in the interest of time tonight, we've got an abbreviated slide deck, knowing that we do have a work schedule, a work session scheduled for after this hearing. For folks who have seen the presentation before, you'll notice the gaps. For those who haven't, if you have questions, by all means, feel free to ask when you come on up. Tonight's objectives are to review the preliminary budget, to review amendments and changes made by the council to the preliminary budget, to summarize outstanding issues, and to solicit public comments about the FY 1920 budget. In terms of where we are in the budget process, this is the schedule of meetings. We are at the last of the public hearings in the entire budget development process. Tonight's hearing will cover the entire council budget. But I will point out, no decisions about school staffing will be made tonight. This is entirely about the allocation of funds that the council has put into their budget. And I will further note that the current budget is at 3.97 in terms of the levy over last year's levy. State statute prohibits us from going above 4% over last year's levy. So there is literally no room to add money to this budget. There's literally no additional funds available under state law for us to add to the budget at this point. The question of whether or not funds could be shifted is an open question. It's one that the council is wrestling with at this point, but there is no room for just adding money to the budget. I think that's an important point for folks to understand. Overview and context, just very quickly. This is a summary of where your tax dollars go. Last night, we had a speaker get up and point out that when she looks at the overall budget on the, um, on the warrant, it looks like about 63 cents actually goes to the schools as opposed to 73 cents. These are your tax dollars. This is 73 cents of every tax dollar, property tax dollar, goes to the school fund. 24 cents goes to the general fund, 2 cents goes to debt service, and 1 cent goes to senior and recreation fund purposes. The additional monies, the reason you get down to 63%, is because we have other revenue that comes in. The schools have other revenue that comes in from the federal government, revenue that comes in from the state government. We have revenue in the form of recreation department fees for programs. Those funds aren't nearly as fungible as the tax dollars, and they're dealt with very separately because they're usually tied to a particular purpose. The school funds received from the federal government, for example, must be put to those purposes. Rec department program fees, we use to run rec department programs. If we didn't collect those fees, we couldn't run the program. So they're not fungible. They can't be shifted from the recreation department to the school department. That's why we focus on the tax dollars. Just to put this in terms of where South Kingstown compares to our peers, the real property tax rate in South Kingstown is, this year at any rate, $15.68. The projected tax rate for next year is 1616, which puts us still right in the same neighborhood in our peer group. And I will note that the green box here is municipalities in Rhode Island that are below the average tax levy, property tax levy, and well below the mean. The mean is that midpoint right here. In addition to the real property tax, we also have an automobile tax. The motor vehicle tax in South Kingstown is the eighth lowest in the state of Rhode Island, and that cannot change. State law prohibits us from increasing that for the last several years. So that rate, the current rate, will remain the same. In fact, everybody's current rate will remain the same. So we're frozen at the eighth lowest in the state of Rhode Island. Again, well below the average and well below the median. One of the issues that we're dealing with this year is the need for increased debt service to support the school facilities construction project that we anticipate will be approved by the state in November. This table simply describes the amount of money, which is $81,500,000 that we need to complete that project, excuse me, as well as some road improvements. This just is a graphic that indicates what that debt load, $81,500,000, means to the budgets in the out-years. It begins to consume more of our operating, we have to commit more of our operating funds to the service of debt. We have to pay interest on the bonds that we borrow, the bonds that we use to borrow money for the construction of school facilities. As an industry standard, the financial industry says 10% is a reasonable amount of your operating fund to put toward debt service. We do not exceed that amount under the debt schedule that Trish Sundell and our finance director has put together, but we come close. We don't have a lot of headroom. Just some general points with regard to the general fund. This is the municipal side, not the school side. Increases, and again, I'm not going to spend much time, the council and school committee have seen these last night. Again, some reclassifications, and a new position, an arborist's position in the Department of Public Services are part of this year's budget. Just again, overview, these are some of those fees, fines, and charges for services. You see the recreation fees are up. You see that the emergency medical services building, billing for insurance is up slightly. This is an increase of $60,000, but again, not very large in the grand scheme of things. Licenses, fees, and rents are expected to actually decline slightly this year. Again, miscellaneous revenues and investment income up by $100,000, operating transfers within our funds. The things that are driving our property tax increase to the 4% are these things. 1.75% increase in the property tax transfer to the schools, that's $942,422. An increase in tax transfers to the senior services program and community recreation program of $28,000. And an increase in the debt service obligation, again, dealing with that need to offset future debt service. Anticipating that we will need to pay more on interest in the future, we're putting some money aside. Expenditures by group, again, the council has seen these within the last 24 hours, so we're going to jump through them. The slides are available or will be available online for anyone who wants to dig into this On the preliminary budget, this slide is impossible to see, but again, the slides are available publicly, so I wanted to make sure you and the public had them. But these are the details. Key characteristics of the budget, school fund, $61,391,000, the general fund, $26,000, and change. Pretty much everything else is, as we like to say in Washington, decimal dust. Just the detail. Changes that have been made during the budget process. The council was initially recommended, we initially recommended a budget that had a property tax transfer increase over last year to the schools of just 1%. The council increased that number to 1.75, which again, has bumped them to the maximum limit of the transfer in order to reduce negative impacts on the school program. The increase in the property tax transfer has resulted in a decrease in the debt service that we originally proposed setting aside. We originally proposed setting aside $500,000. We're down to $335,000. The proposed debt service is at 335 at this point, and the reason we're there is because you couldn't go to 175 and remain at 500,000 in debt service and not exceed the 4% property tax increase. General description of the program increases. The important thing to know here is that we are in a revaluation year, so that the sort of straight-line extrapolation that you do with the levy is not, or the tax rate is not what you're going to see. We would predict a $16.16 tax rate, given the budget that's been put together here, but because it's a revaluation year, we are actually anticipating a $14.47 increase. And just as a summary of things that have not yet been resolved with regard to this budget, and there may not be things that can be resolved in this budget season, but there are some demands, some needs, some requirements in the community that have not, cannot be funded at this point through the budget process. We still do need to have more debt service set aside so that we can tackle the out-year increase in interest and principal payments that we're going to have to be making associated with the school facilities project. It's a big project, and it's going to require us to make a lot of, a lot of payments. Not having been able at this point to get to the full $500,000 set aside is problematic, and it's an issue that we're going to have to address either in this budget cycle by shifting, reducing spending somewhere else, or by planning to increase the commitment that we make in the next few years. If we increase the commitment that we make in the next few years, it simply means that we're not going to have those dollars available for program operations in those future years. Remaining school requirements, there are undoubtedly school requirements that are not being funded through this program, and that remains a challenge and a problem for the community. We have heard quite a bit during this budget cycle about the need for improved coverage, nighttime coverage in particular, with regard to our paramedic service. We do not currently run a second truck 24/7, and the need to do so in order to reach residents, particularly in the southern part of town during the night, is a major issue. The staffing requirement there is for paramedics. I have relayed to the council that it's simply a effort that cannot be accomplished completely this year. We have a plan, a strategy for getting there over the next couple of years, but this is a major issue that has not and cannot be completely addressed during this budget cycle. And then, a traffic enforcement officer. One of the largest things we hear about, one of the biggest problems we hear about constantly, is speeding and reckless driving around town. The solution to that problem is a dedicated police officer who focuses on traffic safety across town, not just enforcement, but grant applications, signage studies, speed studies, this sort of evaluative activities that simply cannot be done without someone dedicated to perform that function. We don't have that person on staff, and we don't have that person budgeted in this budget. And finally, we had a nonprofit organization that missed the deadline to apply for a grant from the community. They've come in late, and they've asked the council to consider their application even though it was not submitted in a timely fashion. And that is the presentation for tonight.
Thanks, Rob. Anything you want to add, Dr. Stringfellow? So any comments up at the table at this point? All right, well, we'll get right to public com.
If I could just...
Please do.
...for just a moment? Okay. So last night was obviously a long trying night, and I wanted to take a few minutes to address things after having a mediocre night's sleep, but, you know, a full day to think about it. I want people to know that I view music and arts as a critical element of our schools, and I feel pretty confident that others on the school committee feel the same. I strongly believe that exposure to the arts is imperative to a K-12 education, to intellectual and emotional development for a child. I don't think it's an enrichment program. I don't think it's an option. I think it's imperative, that it needs to be an integral part of growing up and getting an education in this country. I haven't seen any decisions made to make specific or general cuts to that program or its personnel, but because this is a historically painful budget reduction, there will be a lot of educator layoffs. As chair, I'm committed to ensuring that the process is as fair as possible. Those layoffs will be identified by Dr. Stringfellow, but there will be losses here because the reality is that in order for one program to thrive, another will be downsized. That's the reality. We should all know that at this point, there were no school closures slated for 2019-20. So a budget that supports all our student needs has to be viable without that, unless someone is going to tell me that the original plan was to expedite the closures of Wakefield and Curtis Corner to address those budget shortfalls. Again and again, we've seen the communities say that the four elementary school model is important, and that's why the legacy plan included that as an option. So it's clear at this point that all cuts are impactful to the students. There are no luxury items left to trim. But lastly, I want to also congratulate our entire team of high school educators in the classroom, our building admin, and everybody in between, because the students that joined us last night were incredible. They jumped right into a great opportunity to use their voice in a civic way, and it was really inspiring. So, high school is a tough time, and I think we could all see that there are really incredible things being done there. So, thank you to everyone that showed up last night.
In bringing up the topic of the layoffs and the process, over the course of the past 15 hours, I don't know when was the last time we were here, I received a lot of feedback, and there seems to be a significant bit of confusion as far as the layoff goes. And Dr. Stringfellow, I'm actually going to direct this towards you. We had two distinct voices that would come up to the microphone, and one would be addressing the school committee and/or the school administration revolving around our layoff process and callback process. I don't know if that's the right terminology there, but... And then we had the people who were coming up and basically addressing the town council and asking for more money. We know that, we know that that's not an option. We have our 1.75 and plus the debt service piece, so we're not suggesting that we increase that. So I guess what I'm asking is, again, to clarify, when it comes to the layoff process, there's the confusion there. So it's not a budgetary situation that is forcing the layoff process. It's, I guess that's where I would love to hear some explanation. You did it very well last night, but it seemed, even after you explained it, people kept coming up and asking about the budget again, so it was kind of re-confusing the public. And so I get a lot of questions about, you know, what if we ask the town for more money? Why can't they just give us more money? And it's not about money, and, you know, but the discussion with the students last night. So I'm wondering if we can have clarification of what the layoff process is and why we have it? If that's possible.
That's pretty open-ended. So in a, in a school, I'm sorry if that's too loud. In a school department that did not receive any cuts in state aid, who maintained enrollment, then there would be very few layoffs. For the past 10 years, or as long as I've been superintendent, and we have, as you all know, had some significant losses in state aid from the funding formula, we've also decreased enrollment. So those two factors place more burden for our budget on the local taxpayers, and we come here every year in that sort of scenario. And so, when you say, I hope I captured it right, that when it comes to layoffs, it's not a budgetary situation. It is. A piece of it is the budgetary situation, a piece of it is the enrollment situation. And so, in terms of the new PAT process and contract, I think Mr. Nelson, if he's here again, who is our union president, clarified it very well last night. And I don't know if I can clarify it better. I don't know if, if I know it as intimately as he does. I would say that the confusing part for some staff who've reached out to me is that a process that they knew previously was based on, not on just, weighted towards more of seniority. There were several factors. Mr. Muir, I think, spoke a little bit about this yesterday, and I wonder, as I had a pretty sleepless night last night as well, I wonder if that's where the fear comes from, because he has spoken to the fact that he is one of the least senior in that department, and although nothing has been finalized, Mrs. Cantor is exactly right to say that, there is a concern, I would say, in a declining enrollment and with lots of staff budget cuts, of where the least senior, extremely talented teachers will fare. So I don't know if there are any specific questions, but that's sort of it in a nutshell from my perspective.
It's more that, what I fear is that we'll have more people coming up and asking for more money, and the answer isn't currently more money from the town, because it's not a possibility. The answer is for us to figure out what to do with the money that we have. I guess that's, I'm going to make that clear.
Mr. President, if I may, I think that's an important point, and it's an interesting problem. Not only is tonight not a night where the council can decide to add more money, although the council does have the ability to shift funds. I mean, that is within their purview. It would mean going for core programs elsewhere. I mean, the trade-offs here are not easy trade-offs. You'd be talking about police officers versus other programs. I mean, it would be a very brutal thing to be asking. But, I mean, in theory, it's a thing that could be asked. The other important note is that the school committee doesn't make a decision after this hearing tonight on how to deal with the allocation it's been given. So this forum is a place for input, but it's not the place to have the most immediate and direct impact on the decision that folks want to have the biggest impact on.
To follow that up, in terms of shifting money around, there is, as far as I know, the opportunity, not that we're asking you at this time to exercise it, but there would be the opportunity with the $335,000, $100,000 that's been set aside for the future debt service that we were anticipating taking on sooner, and that wouldn't be taken away from police or ambulance. I mean, I think we've heard a lot of testimony about that, but that would, there is some opportunity there, and I do understand the idea of putting the money away, but we also are looking forward towards a early Curtis Corner middle school closure. So if we did that and reap the benefits there, which would be around $750,000 over two years, we would be able, we could repay that so that we're not just draining it and forgetting about it. So I've just been thinking about that, that lump sum of money, that could do an awful lot for this year's budget for us, for some really, really important positions that we cut. I'd love to see, for example, the literacy coordinator. I'd love to see the social-emotional, I mean, to me, the social-emotional learning coordinator is not a, is not a nice thing to have. That's a necessity. And I think from the students that we heard from last night, to me, that wasn't just about music and drama and arts. That was, we need a lot, a lot in our district. So there is that, and I think that we have something to offer back to the town with that closure of Curtis Corner for next year. It's not, we're asking for more without being willing to give back to that pot of money.
Mr. President, if I may, I appreciate the creativity in that suggestion. I think it's a good thing for us to try to think outside of the box. The danger that that poses is really scary. We are already projecting a deficit in the debt service fund of $900,000 if we do nothing. And by reducing our contribution by $165,000 already, we've increased, and we're now over $1 million in terms of the deficit in that fund in 2024. That's structural, and unless we're guaranteed repayment to offset that, it's a very scary proposition, because if we get to 2024 and we have a deficit and cannot pay principal and interest to the tune of $1 million, we are going to have to make dramatic cuts across the board.
Can I ask a question about that? So, it's pretty clear in the calculations that closure of Curtis Corner is, is it like 700,000 to 800,000 a year? 750. So that was originally planned for 2022. That seems like a pretty predictable savings. I guess my question is, if we already have around, did you say 900,000?
Deficit.
What is, how did that happen? What is the plan to address that? Is there a predictable cost savings that we have identified to handle that? Because we actually have, we have one.
So that deficit is a built-in figure. We're building to a payment of an $80 million, $81 million bonded debt. We have scheduled it such that there's a hole in the 2024 payment scheme. We've tried to build up quickly enough that we can get a smooth transition into the full payment schedule, but if we don't do it smoothly enough, we're going to see spikes in the requirement from taxpayers, which means cuts to programs because we can't go over the 4% cap. So that $900,000 deficit is the best hole we could design. It was the best way to get to a shortfall that wasn't going to be devastating. And the $500,000 payment that Trish had designed for this year was to reduce that nine to four, to start getting us to a place where we could begin to even overcome that hole in the budget. I appreciate that there may be savings in the future, but this school committee, this council, can't bind the next school committee and the next council, and our fiduciary duty to the community is to design a fiscal structure for debt that isn't going to leave us exposed to potentially catastrophic problems.
So, like, building on that, then, that kind of made me think about our own undesignated fund. Is it possible to pull from that, and have the savings from Curtis Corner then replenish the undesignated funds?
Unfortunately, undesignated funds you can't count on from year to year. The last couple of years, if you remember, this year alone, we tapped into $375,000 of the undesignated funds to fund the folk ed tuitions that we had this year. This year, we're on tap not to get the same kind of surplus as we have in other years. I expect the surplus to be below $200,000. So we already spent $375,000 that we committed to. We also have committed into this year's budget... We also have committed into this year's budget, the budget we're working now on is $475,000. We're only going to put 200 back in, so that's another $275,000. So we're starting to see the fund balance or the undesignated fund balance slide a little bit, drop a little bit, not to the point where it's problematic, but it's stuff that I, I'm very cautious to tap into that since we already have already this year. And it's not usual that you tap into it for what appears to be operating costs, but this was an exceptional situation.
I have a question. Is that okay, Bill? So the undesignated fund, is it true that in the years where we end up with a budget surplus at the end of the year, we, uh, over budget and we have savings, usually it's between, or it has been between 300,000 and 1.2 million, say, over the past decade? Where does that money go at the end of the year? Does it go back into the undesignated fund?
It does go back into the undesignated fund, but keep in mind, in that same time period, we've been averaging between 400 and 500,000 of that undesignated fund we've been putting back in the budget as a revenue source.
Many years ago, um, the, the budget was built using the undesignated funds as revenue, a certain amount. And we've been trying to get you away from that. That's not a very good budgeting practice to be able to say, we must finish the year with $500,000 in surplus so that we can use that $500,000 in surplus the next year as a part of a revenue source. So it would be helpful, and we've tried, to wean you off of what has been the practice. Once it's been the practice, unless there's something else that can make up that revenue source, it's difficult to do. But being able to end every year with a $500,000 revenue, uh, surplus is, is difficult. So this year, you're seeing, um, some of the unusual things, like the career and technical education center changes of, um, us not being able to predict that ninth graders would be going to other communities. That, that's a new, new field, a new marketing field for us. So you saw the guidance council do, do their very best to predict who was going to go, and the, the predictions were off by 375,000. So we're happy to have had that, but the idea would be to wean yourself off reliance on the, the fund balance.
That almost does make it seem possible, like maybe not, you know, we should wean ourselves off, but I wonder if there is, say, when you go to balance, when you go to figure out layoffs based on student choice, suppose you're going to cut point two of a music teacher or something, and that would then displace Mr. Muir, couldn't we tap the undesignated fund for that two, point two music teacher? I mean, that's really not a ton of money.
If you tap it this year, you'll have to tap it next year. And as Dr. Stringfellow just said, we're looking to wean ourselves off.
We're going to have savings from Curtis Corner Middle School closing.
You haven't voted to close Curtis Corner Middle School right now.
No, of course not, but, but we have talked about it being likely that we will, not for the next school year, but the following year.
Right. So for, for us, it's state law that we maintain a balanced budget and you all decide what that balanced budget is. And so you made decisions at the last, um, several school committee meetings of, of coming to a budget number. It is in your power certainly to change going forward, and you can have that conversation on the 14th. Within the money that they've authorized you, if you would like to make changes, that's within your power.
So.
Um, Mrs. Crawford, I'm going to put you on the spot again. Um, in the beginning of my time on the school committee for about the first, um, four years, I served on the accountability subcommittee and was the chair for a number of years. Um, and we worked closely together and I'm the other side of the math brain. I'm not the accountant person, but I do recall a discussion, something that you explained to me, um, regarding, and I might be using the wrong accounting terminology, so bear with me, please, um, best practices in accounting for the percent of your budget that it's recommended be had as a, as an undesignated fund. Are you in a position this evening to kind of address, address that issue so that people at the table and in the community might better understand that?
Industry norm, they talk about a seven to 10% of the fund balance based on the operating budget that you have currently in place. There are also a lot of other factors that go into something like that, um, aside from, from, um, the, the fund balance. Right now, we have what's called an undesignated fund balance of 2.6 million dollars. That is before we've taken the $375,000 out, that we will be taking out. So that drops it down to about 2.2 million dollars. And then also, like I said, we are not, um, this year anticipating the year of making 475,000, which we've budgeted this year for this year's operating budget that you're looking at now. So we may see the fund balance drop low 200,000, I'm sorry, 2 million dollars. So it's not to drop a little bit and, um, that gets away from where we would like to see. We like to use the fund balance as a rainy day fund, like we did this year with the, the vocad. We did not anticipate that. However, we had the funds available and we could, uh, provide the necessary funding for that program, which we were required to do.
Mr. President, if I may, just another point to keep in mind when we think about future savings and, and future revenues, it's very difficult to predict the future with the possible exception of state revenue. We're in the ninth year of a 10-year revenue that has been consistently reducing the state funding available for education to South Kingston. We can anticipate a reduction again next year. After next year, we don't know what the formula is going to be. We have no way of predicting whether the state is going to turn around its policy and start shining on South Kingston or whether it's going to continue, um, on the path that it's been on. Anyone around the table who's been watching this for the last decade probably has a sense of where that's going to go. We, we can't rely on, on outside revenue sources because they're just not going to be predictable for us. We need to figure out how to do this internally. And one time, one-year fixes, tapping in, into undesignated fund balances for FTE, these are rainy day funds. They're meant for when a roof collapses and you, you gotta, you gotta deal with that. They're meant for, you know, catastrophic events that we need to address quickly. That's what the rainy day funds are there for. Uh, they're not, they can't be used for operating because it just doesn't, it doesn't work in the long haul.
Councilmember Collins, can I ask a question? Um, my question is, that's helpful to understand. Um, and it's also, I think, helpful to get a picture of what the school department is putting in their undesignated fund balance. And I just wondered, as part of the town budget, is there the same approach? And what amount of money is that and what percentage of the budget is that?
So the, the best practices, um, 10 to 17%, and that's a policy that the council has adopted. Uh, right now, we are a little bit below at 15.5%.
Can you tell the?
Sorry.
What is the actual amount of money in the rainy day?
Um.
Cent of 20.
No, it's, no.
That's right.
12.5 million dollars. And that's of the, um, town and school budget.
Any other questions about that?
One more observation about that number because it is, it's an appealing target, but it's also a, a number that the, um, bond industry, the rating companies look at. And it, it's that rainy day funds availability that strengthens our bond rating. It's one of the things that would-be lenders, uh, look to, to make sure that lending to the community is not risky. So while it seems to just be sitting there idle in the corner, in fact, it's invested, so it does generate revenue for the community. It's also a very important, uh, part of how the financial industry looks at the community and determines whether or not we should get a favorable bond rating when we go out to bond four schools, for example.
Um, does the undesignated fund for the, uh, the school district, um, roll into that and affect the bond rating?
We have tried hard to take all of our, um, budgeted funds to include the water, the wastewater, because that's one thing we wanted, that, that double A bond rating. Um, and they don't look at that. And I, I've actually asked the bond rating agencies if they would ever consider, um, doing it in segments because they, they benchmark you across the country. So obviously, we budget much differently here in the Northeast than, you know, down in the, in the South where they have their own, the schools have their own taxing authority. So I said, maybe you could regionalize it and then it would be a little more fairer, but that's not how they work.
Thank you. Any further questions up here? All right. Uh, then at this point, we'll take comment from the public. Again, uh, if you spoke last night, just hold off and let other people speak first and try to keep it to three minutes.
I have to bring this down because I'm short. Good evening, everybody. I'm Lisa Richter. Um, I'm here as a parent and, uh, have one child still in the, um, high school graduating senior and a second child who graduated, uh, in 2014. And, um, I don't have any questions about the money. People at this table understand this much better than I do, and I don't really have any questions about that. I do want to continue something that Kate brought up. I am trying to really understand this process, um, this old process versus this new process by which we're evaluating teachers. And so what I was hearing last night was that something happened last Tuesday, and I wasn't here for that, but something happened apparently last Tuesday whereby this process changed, um, and it was decided that maybe seniority in the new process was now being considered weighing more heavily than perhaps before. And I just don't understand this. So what I'm asking is, and I think this might be a question for the school committee, but it might be for Dr. Stringfellow, um, if you can please help me and the rest of us who might not be clear on it, when did the change take place? How was it decided? And, um, and, and why was it determined to be a better process if we're no longer taking into consideration the qualifications of the teacher? And I don't mind sitting down so that you can address everybody else. Thank you.
Okay. Sure. So I can take that. Um, so there was a change in the policy last week at a school committee meeting. Portions of the existing, what's called the PAT policy, personnel assignment transfer policy, were suspended to address just volunteer transfers, voluntary transfers only. So a voluntary transfer is when a teacher seeks to move into an open position voluntarily. Um, what is different this year is that because of the extreme budget reductions, there are going to be fewer positions remaining for teachers to move into. Um, in the past, an element of that was a more subjective interview with a panel. Um, and teachers continually asked, um, last fall, it was like the number one thing that the teachers wanted addressed as quickly as possible in order to boost morale is they wanted a more transparent process, a more objective, transparent process. And they wanted to be part of it and have more of a voice in where they would be transferred to in a voluntary situation. So that's why that change was made. So the, the reason it, um, we would have been feeling these very significant impacts regardless because there are going to be fewer positions remaining because of the number of FTEs that are reduced out of this budget.
One thing that came up last night that I think is important to understand in that question is also layoffs happen based on seniority and that's state statute. It's not a district policy.
All right. Thank you. Uh, other comments, please. First come, first served. Oh, and if I didn't say so before, just state your name for the record.
Uh, hello. My name is Grace Major and I'm a senior at South Kingston High School this year. Um, I feel strongly that I need to speak up for what I believe is a very important part of this discussion tonight, and I would like to address it to the school committee I'd like to start off by saying I completely understand that the town council cannot provide more money. I just respectfully request that the school committee adjust or redirect funds so that we can continue the high level of excellence that our music and drama departments have experienced under the leadership of Mr. Muir and Mr. Benz. I respectfully request, to put it simply, that we find a way to make it work. The reason why is I personally have grown so much as a student and a person while I have been Mr. Muir's student, and I would be devastated to know that the same opportunity would not be provided to future students if you were to be laid off. Mr. Muir is far more than a warm body filling a teaching position in our high school. His hard work and dedication is an inspiration and a gift to us, and as students, we feel he is irreplaceable. I hope you will consider this. It would be a shame and a loss for our community to not have him at our high school. Thank you.
Brian Massenanti, um, which is going to make this a little awkward, but, um, during my, uh, during my regular job, I, I run a test engineering team and I'm going to be hiring soon. And when I think about what I'm going to be hiring, I'm going to be hiring someone who's hungry, someone who has new ideas, um, someone who's really going to go after it. And I'm a process guy. When I, when I listen to you guys talk about the numbers, I hear like a low cycle hum. I don't understand the money. Kate does all the money, but, um, but I understand process. And to me, any process that results in losing someone who's hungry like that, who has those ideas and who's innovating in the ways that someone like Mr. Muir is innovating, that process needs to be looked at. It needs to be broken down because it's not right and it should be revamped. And I, I still understand all of the ins and outs of it. I appreciate all the explanations that have gone on, but I just want to make it known that I don't believe that any kind of process that results in that is, is a working process. And that's really it. That's all I want to say. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Theo Belgrape and I'm a senior at South Kingston High School. And, um, I am echoing what the two previous speakers before me have said, that, um, we need to find the funds, we need to shift the funds to find a way to keep the music program at the high school because the arts program at the school has literally saved my life. It has kept me focused and it has given me a purpose for my life. It has transformed me in a way that nothing else could have, and losing that would be terrible for the students coming into the high school after us. That's all.
Thank you. If there's folks who were here last night who spoke, start.
I wasn't here last night, but, um, um, I also hope we can find a way to support our music program. Um, sorry, Tara Apperson. So I'm glad to have the opportunity to ask you this question, but I, I heard that there was a retirement in the elementary music teachers and that, that may or may not be filled, and if it's not filled, our, um, strings and chorus program could be at risk. So I'm hoping there might be some answers to that. Hopefully it's unfounded, but, um, the other thing too is I'm just curious about what dollar amount we're looking at to keep our music program supported as is. Thank you.
Great.
So the, that was a rumor. We did receive questions about that. There was a retirement, and the good news is that that retirement meant that as enrollment is lost and as budgets are declined, then there wouldn't be a greater impact on the arts. It's not good that this very talented teacher is retiring, because he's wonderful. There is no truth to the matter that any programs are being planned to be eliminated. That is not accurate. There is no, no change to the elementary program, to the middle school program, or the high school program. The piece at issue seems to be the personnel who will be in each spot, and that's not been determined yet. And in terms of the dollar amount, specifically, I don't mean to have you get up again, but what did you mean by what dollar amount are we talking about here?
So in order to ensure that we're not cutting a position...
In the arts entirely?
Well, in music, because it's, you know, from what we've heard, that...
So I haven't, I don't know an exact dollar amount, but that's something that we can prioritize to have for the, for the 14th, if that's important specifically.
Well, I think it'll be important to the committee.
Right, general, it was, it's two itinerant FTEs, right? Two full-time, so if you just kind of do general math of like what...
Might not be that much.
No?
No.
I thought that's what the, what the voted-on budget included was 2.0 FTEs.
So what the, at the middle school program, it's two FTEs, but they're not all in this area. I'm so sorry. I'm echoing, for some reason, I keep trying to move away from myself. Do you hear the echo? Okay. So it's two FTEs of all that is itinerance. That's not just art, so it would be less than that. And you're right, the, for two FTEs, you're looking at 130,000 each salary and benefits...
Jim O'Neill, Matunik. I appreciated last evening, the kids were great, well-behaved, well-spoken, and I hope everyone realizes that it's up to the school committee positions to eliminate or to continue, not up to the town council. I've stood up here for 20 years, probably now, hopefully understanding some of the arithmetic that a few of you might understand. Talking with the RIDE today, senior, senior financial advisor. 2012, the first official year of the education funding formula. And the numbers are incredible. Barrington, Cumberland, East Greenwich, North Kingston, Westerly, Smithfield, Neuregansett, communities that can afford higher taxes. Every one of those communities, over the last eight years, since 2012, the official starting date fiscal year, every one of them are at least even or up millions of dollars since 2012. Only one community is down almost $4 million, from $9 million to 5.3 million. If that doesn't dawn on all of you that we've got a problem here, and the problem is, very simply, we have not managed our facilities. Bob Hicks, superintendent of schools back in '09, '10, before Kristen came on. And by the way, Kristen's done a great job. She answers to her board, and you answer to the public. This is what it's all about. There can be administrative movements within departments, but she answers to the board. So don't get upset with her, don't get upset with the population. But these are facts, data. Why do all of you hate data? I've never seen anything like this before in my life. We have, the only community of our size in the state of Rhode Island has dropped millions of dollars. And why is that? Because Bob Hicks said in '09 and '10, we can save 6,000 to 650,000 per year by closing Curtis Corner. Tony Mager, chairman, school committee, 2012. We are overfacilitated, we are absolutely hurting our program development. Don't know what more proof you need. That's in the papers everywhere else. What proof do you need? What more proof do you need? Barrington, all these other towns, they have all the capacity to spend more money, but all of their education formula numbers have gone up, except South Kingston. We've gone down from the 2012 point, from almost 9 million to 5.3 million. What is that telling you? It's telling you we have not managed our facilities. I don't care if you're selling donuts, helping kids getting education. What are you missing? What do the seven of you and the five of you do not understand? Deborah Guest, head of RIDE back in '09, '10, you guys are spending money like it's going out of style. North Kingston, $64 million budget, 4,100 kids, 16,000. We're spending $15 million more than they are. Two million, take $2 million out for education. What don't you understand about numbers? I don't get it. Just don't get it. It's so obvious. These are cohorts. This isn't comparing ourselves with these Providence, Pawtucket, One Socket, and the poorer cities. Data doesn't lie. It has never lied. Don't understand it.
Jim, just...
I think, what, we're three minutes, and last night you gave people 30 minutes? Give me a break, Abel. I'll finish up in a minute.
We have a second workshop to get to.
I'll finish up in a minute. Anyway, Curtis Corner, Middle School, was projected to be closed by 2022. The school committee said that. Why not close it now? What are you waiting for? Close it now, we'll save a couple hundred thousand dollars in transportation. According to Bob Hicks, we'll close, we'll save 600, 650,000 per year. We can save the Mr. Muirs where they are tonight, maybe we can save an extra teacher or two. But this is insanity, that you won't, you will not understand facilities management. What is it good to spend money if it's all gonna down the drain in years from now? It's so obvious. It's numbers. It's data. It's all in front of you. So I'm sorry to say that this 1.75% increase you're gonna move forward with, and I hope someone brings a petition, because the people should know that malfeasance will not work, that financial fraud is not part of the system in South Kingston. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Brian Nelson, live in Kingston, teacher in town, also NEISK president. I just wanna take a minute tonight to kind of really give a verbal high-five to the students and parents who showed up last night to kind of speak. A member last night asked a question, you know, what needs to be done to get, you know, our district back near number one? I strongly feel that we need more parent and student input in all the decisions that are being made. That's critical. So students who are here, great, great job. I thought that was amazing. I have two daughters who are 10 and 11, and I truly hope that when they're your age, they have the guts to do what you did, because that was just fantastic. Thank you.
Hello. Christian Blaney from Wakefield. I have a question about the budget. We spoke a little bit last night about the transportation budget part, and I think somebody mentioned that that's a, there's two years left on that contract. Is that right? That is correct. And how is that contract, is that negotiated by the school committee? Is that negotiated by the town? Is it, where does that come from?
It's a competitive bid. We bid that out, and based on the bid we then awarded, I can tell you, in the past, what we've done is we've reached out to numerous agencies, companies that provide public transportation for schools, and probably in the last 10 years, we only get two bidders.
Really?
Yeah.
Interesting, because obviously, the budget, so it's 4.1 million dollars, right, this year, right? You look at, if my research is right, North Kingston is 1.4 million dollars, I think, and that's a pretty comparable town when you look at it. I know you guys have a committee, and I know this isn't news to you, you're all going, oh, my God, that's really... But, you know, in the spirit of operational efficiencies, I'm looking for low-hanging fruit, I'll pose the question, thinking outside of the box, what happens if you say, no? What happens if you say, we don't have the money, we need to force negotiation? What happens if you say, we have $3 million to pay you this year, and you need to rewrite the roots and come up with something? What are the ramifications? Does it affect the bond? Is it a fine? Is it, what would happen in a case like that?
So there are laws that govern how long children can be on a bus. We are a very large demographic area, and we operate many efficiencies. We actually have a two-tier bus system that saves us more than, than you can imagine. One of our issues is that our buses run half-full sometimes, because parents choose to drive.
You sure do.
And so if you've followed a bus pretty much anywhere in Rhode Island, some of them run half-full. Transportation is required by state law, although it's missing from the market basket of the funding formula. So that's, that's been an unevenness that I've brought to the attention of whichever commissioner we've had in the last 10 years that I've been superintendent, and we're hoping that when Angelica Infante-Green takes over, we can approach her as commissioner and say, this is an imbalance. We need, we need some help here in this area. That unfortunately, isn't where we stand today. I'd also like to acknowledge the fact that we have a transportation subcommittee of the school committee that works very, very hard on finding any efficiencies. If parents have ideas, they're welcome to come and share it with the transportation committee. Kate is the representative from, from the school department. Mary Ann sits on that committee, as well as our transportation coordinator, and they run a very tight ship within the laws that we have to abide by. Another, one other piece that I'll say is, unlike other communities, we have very few sidewalks in our town, and so the littlest learners cannot be walking on, without sidewalks. So they, they need, their safety has to come first, and bus monitors, who are an integral part of that safety, is another piece of state law. So it seems like low-hanging fruit.
It seems outrageous.
It's not low-hanging fruit.
The difference between ours and North Kingston, I was just surprised to see it when I was looking at it and looking in the budget. I'm one of those people that reads the 378-page budget. Thank you very much, Robert. But it just seemed outrageous to me, because we're not, I mean, North Kingston is, is a little smaller, but not outrageously smaller than our community. Am I correct in that? Or, yeah? Okay. Okay, anyway, thank you very much.
So...
Michelle.
I would, Mr. Blane, I would just like you and the other people that have questions about transportation. I'm the legislative liaison for the school committee, and I work very closely with all of the representatives and it's mostly Senator Saznalsky, but the other senators also that represent any small portion of our town. I can't give you the dollar amount, but I know there was a bill brought before the General Assembly in the last legislative season, not in the current one, that gave us some little bit of relief from the transportation. But trust me, our representatives and our senators hear from me loud and often with regard to the fact that when the funding formula was originally enacted, that the legislators from the more urban districts seemed to have a louder voice, or maybe there were just more of them, more voices, I mean. And, and the transportation was in and out of the formula when they were working on it, and the final version, transportation is not, as Dr. Stringfellow mentioned, transportation is not even considered in the funding formula. When I go to statewide meetings with school committee members from other districts, they, they questioned me. $4.1 million, Michelle, you must have that wrong. No, trust me, I don't have that wrong. But we are tied, you know, like neck and neck with Coventry for the landmass and the drivable roads, and that's, that's where our transportation budget takes the biggest hit. That and the fact that it's not included in the funding formula.
So it is grossly unfair not to include transportation in the funding formula, especially as a mandated educational activity. Has any municipality sued the state RIDE over what seems like an injustice?
What an idea.
Well, I'm not a lawyer myself, but...
I'd be happy to talk to the council about it. I mean, you know, the truth of the matter is, the formula is in its last year, next year. The formula is going to be rewritten by the state legislature, beginning, they're actually beginning that process now. There's preliminary talk about it. I have talked, I've talked to Representative McInty and other local delegates about how we can participate as fully and robustly in that discussion as possible. Kristen and I have spoken about the need for us to be part of that conversation. I think our opportunity in the rewriting may be greater than our opportunity in the courts, but I'd be happy to, happy to talk to them.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting discussion. I think, I mean, damages have been done to our community by the funding formula, and the legislative process is not addressing those damages. They, you know, we just don't have enough of a delegation to be able to address those concerns. So anyway...
Just one thought on that, and I do think that Michelle's right, that it's not the, the energy in the voices that come from South Kingston, it's the number. It's, it's the chorus from the north that drowns out the few enthusiastic voices. And what I would suggest is, the community during this rewrite needs to be actively engaging and assisting our representatives. We've seen the advocacy here in this room last night. We've got advocates, we've got very effective folks who could participate in that process. We just need to know where, when, and how to engage.
I'm not sure how many people that, you know, I grew up here in town, I haven't really lived anywhere else, except for a short space of time when I lost my head. But in some of the urban districts, high school students are not transported. They are issued or ripped a bus pass, and that's how they get to school, or they make arrangements for their own transportation. The other thing, and I'm stealing this comment from Dr. Stringfellow, because I've heard her make it several times, in a lot of the urban districts, you know, a, a school bus will drive, you know, like two blocks, picking up little elementary school children, and the bus will be filled. In South Kingston, like even some of the neighborhoods and the developments off South Road over where I live, they have to go through five or six developments before they have half a busload.
I think another piece is that we don't have as many walkable sites. So we have a few neighborhood schools where there is, is walkability, but in the urban areas, it's not even so much the buses, it's the fact that most kids live within walking distance, so they have a less of a reliance on buses. We don't have that opportunity, certainly for the high school or Curtis Corner and Broadrock in so much as other communities do, and that should be noted.
So we can get back to the public comment now?
Hi, Cadence Hansen. This was actually perfect timing, because I was coming up to tell you that I had the opportunity... opportunity... Can you guys hear me? Sorry. That I had the opportunity to talk to our representative, Teresa Tansey, and she was telling me that there are two bills that are supposed to come up in the next six to eight weeks. The schedule hasn't been put out yet, but bills H-5601 and H-5602 would both, both of them would help us greatly with our budget. The first one, I'm going to give you like the three-senent spiel about each bill. The first one is, this act would freeze the amount of education aid for local school agencies that are scheduled to receive less aid under the funding formula. Education aid would be frozen at the rate provided in the fiscal year of 2019 for a period of three years. This act would take effect upon passage. So that's the first one. That would save us approximately 800K next year. Now, that one is probably not as useful since we are going to be hopefully renegotiating our funding formula. The second one is the biggest one for us, and it's about busing. This act would provide that the state would reimburse the school committees for the cost of providing student transportation services to public and private school pupils. This act would take effect on July 1, 2019. That would save us $4 million. This is not the first time that she's taken this up to the state. And the times that she's taken it up to the state, the criticisms that she's gotten from her peers is that our town has never gone to 4%. We're there now. And representatives from our town have never been there. They have never shown up on that day. And I'm urging everybody at this table, everybody in the audience, everybody that's at home, we all care about this, no matter what side of this argument you're on, having more money would help our problems. So I'm urging everybody here to follow the bills once again, H-5601 and H-5602, they should come up. And having a presence, any presence is going to help, but having everybody here at this table in the State House when these are heard, it's going to make this bill far more passable. And it's $4 million. So, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So I've been up to the State House with Kathy Fogarty. Is this a different bill than what she, is this new?
This one is new this year. Did you do it in previous years?
It was like the day after I was appointed to School Committee.
It is likely the same.
Dragged me up there. And...
It is likely a reinstitution of the same thing.
Okay. But the key point that you said is, we weren't anywhere near 4%, and now we are.
Right.
In talking to Teresa, myself, too, over the last couple of years, that has been her main point, is that she can bring these bills, but if we don't have members of the community with strong voices, so all of the students from the drama club?
Yes.
We need you. The clincher is, is that we only receive 48 hours' notice, right? 48 or sometimes less. So like the bill that Kate went to testify for last year, the day after we were appointed, we had, we got notice that morning.
Yes.
So if, maybe going forward, since we have so many engaged students, we could coordinate now with Mr. Muir, because he seems to have a lot of clout in that school. All joking aside, honestly, I think that that would be, you guys could be huge difference makers. Like $4.1 million, that's a lot of music.
So... So I only, I, we can look up the whole thing and read it. I only printed out the small, like, easy-to-explain part. And this exact wording for that is that the act would provide the state with, the act, this act would provide that the state would reimburse the school committees for the cost of providing student transportation services, which means that we won't have our busing budget problem. Our school committee would essentially get $4 million more dollars. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't be fighting, you know, we wouldn't be cutting programs.
This has come up again in, I don't know how many years, our reps have brought this bill to the state. The problem is, is they look at our reps and they say, "Well, if this is such a big problem, where are all the people telling us it's such a big problem?" So if she doesn't have anyone behind her, and she stands up and says, "South Kingston really needs $4.1 million. We're having a tough time down here. We need to be reimbursed for transportation because it wasn't included in the funding formula." And there's no one behind her saying, "And this is why," and then the next person saying, "And this is why, and this is why," over and over, like last night happened? That makes a difference. It makes a difference. You guys have the ability to make a difference, and this would be amazing, and it's a great, I'm so glad you brought that up. So thank you so much for being here tonight.
So I have two more things that I want to point out along the same lines. I forgot to mention this before, but you can actually go to the State of Rhode Island General Assembly website and sign up for Bill Tracker, and they will email you as soon as that bill gets put onto the schedule, so you'll know immediately. And additionally, since, I guess, apparently the whole state is following this, these bills are not just for South Kingston. These bills are for everybody in the state. So, you know, we're, we'd freeze the funding formula for all of the districts that are going down. We would help to subsidize the busing for all of the districts that have this huge buzzing, busing budget. So everybody that's watching from all over the state, please go and support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erin Pierce, and I wrote to each and every one of you yesterday, and I just wanted to say I'm so glad to hear that there will not be budget cuts within the arts and music program. I would just like to stand up here and ask that there would not be a change in personnel in the high school. I feel like it's important. I know it's not something that wanted to be spoken about tonight, or, but my kids have just blossomed in the program and under Mr. Muir and Mr. Benz, and I would really like to see them to continue in that program. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Any comments up here at the table? All right, this is our last budget hearing.
Mr. President, just for the record, I've got one question that I just want to get on the record. One of the things that I have noted about the process is, we don't necessarily track, or I haven't certainly tracked as well as I'd like, revenue projections after the submission of the school budget. Have there been any changes in revenue projections since the School Committee submitted its last budget form to us?
There is the change in state aid, which we did change, unfortunately went the wrong way, by $90,000. And Medicare is running a little better this year than it has in previous years, so that's...
Just an FYI, I will track those two bills, and I will email you and let you know as soon as I find out when they come up for a hearing, so that the people in the public know if you're going to the State House to testify, you're asked to bring a certain number of copies of your testimony, written copies. And so you, you, when you go to the State House, you have to find out where in the State House you're going to be located, depends on which committee is hearing the bill. And when you, when you bring your copies of your testimony, you'll find that out by looking on the website. You look how many copies that they want, because each committee asks for a different number of copies. It's usually somewhere around 15 to or so copies. And then when you go in, you sign in and indicate what you're, what you're there to testify for.
Just to add on to that, if it feels too much like homework, you don't actually have to submit written testimony, you can just offer spoken testimony. Oftentimes, that's more impactful in the moment and gets caught on television cameras. I know some legislators, they might never read those letters if you submit them.
I just want to make a couple of brief comments. First, one observation. I don't care what the question is, then there's never an easy answer. That's not a criticism, it's just kind of an observation. These are tough, tough, tough decisions that all these people are making. I wanted to thank everybody that came out. The comments that we heard last night were inspirational. Those kids are, those kids are awesome. You guys are putting out a good product. As far as the budget, I'm going to be interested to see what happens from here until the final budget approval, and I'll reserve my comments on the budget exactly until then. But there's some hard choices to make from here. So thank you, everybody.
I just wanted to thank the Town Council for having us throughout this process, and I feel like we are better prepared for the budget, for next year's budget, as far as some of the expectations that you guys have. First of all, I think that we will probably come back with a prepared budget for exactly the amount of money that you guys have requested, you know, regardless of how difficult that would be for us. But also, if there are any, any issues you have with our budget presentation, the process, whatever it is, absolutely let us know. We want to make this, you know, more collaborative process, and we definitely want to be on the same page. So if there's anything that you would like to change about the way that the process goes, the way we present the budget, I know it's kind of the same budget every year with a few slides switched out, you know, whatever you guys, whatever you guys need to make better decisions, let us know.
Thank you for that offer. I will say, you know, we haven't heard in the past couple days, but I think going throughout this budget process, much was made about sort of the lack of a long-term plan, budgeting plan for the schools. And I just want to say, I mean, it's an ideal goal to try and come to that, but I also want to recognize how difficult it is when you're in an environment where you don't control your revenues year to year. You don't know what you're going to be losing from the state. You don't know what we on the Town Council are going to give you. So it's a difficult position. I think it's hard for, you know, the broader community to understand that position. Speaking of the budget more generally, I agree with Joe, we'll probably have more final comments when we approve the final budget. I just ask people to sort of look over what we're doing, and we try to be very conscientious about budgeting. If you look at overall town expenditures that we're proposing, it's a 1.56% increase in the total program. That's much below the rate of inflation. It's unfortunate that we need to raise the property tax 3.97% to even get that far. But it has been a difficult budgeting situation, not just for the schools, but for the town receiving less revenues from some of our state agencies. So we got to keep those things in mind. We've done the best we can, I think, to this point. I want to thank everybody up here for being a part of that process, and for the people in the public who have come to offer their thoughts as well. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And that motion carries. And you guys are free to go now. You can stick around. Hello, yeah, just, you can have those conversations outside, thank you. It's all right, I'm just trying to help.
You want me up, Derek?
Yeah, I think so. I can't even remember what it was.
you get the aggregate community program, you put a price tag to that, and then you have to pay for that cost. Exemptions are the holes that we poke in the budget for the program. They're not necessarily fatal, but they are definitely deviations from the general spend plan. Only really two ways to provide all of the funding and reduce taxes that we need. You can either spend less or you can generate more in terms of revenue. You can generate more in terms of property tax revenue or you can generate more in terms of fees. A lot of municipalities outside of the Northeast have got a local sales tax, which is a lifeline and keeps property taxes low in many parts of this country. We don't do that up here. We don't have the authority to levy a local sales tax. The meals and the hotel tax are sort of a hybrid here in Rhode Island. The state collects it and reimburses or gives, remits back to the municipality where the hotel or the restaurant is located, some portion of that, but it's not a true local sales tax. We're not here to talk about the merits of that. It works very well in many places. I would love if we were in an environment where the state of Rhode Island would be willing to give municipalities that. They don't. This is what we spend on. We've got the citizens saying what they want. That drives the definition of mandatory and discretionary programs. Those discretionary and mandatory programs are made up of wages, healthcare, employment concurrent benefits, that's things like vacation time that we give people while they work for us, post-employment benefits, retirement, building maintenance, equipment purchases, real estate acquisition, and consumable commodities. These are the things that go into the cost of the program. Changes in citizen preferences, of course, can change the nature of the spend program. If folks want trash service, that changes what we have to spend on. We don't do trash service in South Kingstown. But if we wanted to do trash service, we'd certainly have to spend more. Beach maintenance, the level of beach maintenance that folks find acceptable, obviously, can change over time. And teacher-student ratios can change over time, but those preferences are what drive the program. So it's hard to deal with these things in the abstract. It really is driven by consumer tastes and preferences, citizen tastes and preferences. Seventy-five to eighty percent of municipal spending is on labor costs. That's just built in, baked right in. Now, some of that you can offset over time with technology changes. Voicemail, email has made municipal governments more efficient, but it's, for the most part, you need a building inspector, you need a building inspector. Those things are just, that's the nature of the service. It is a service industry, it is not a manufacturing enterprise. Capital is actually a relatively small part of most municipal budgets. So just sort of thinking about what you might reduce spending on and keep taxes low through the reduction side. This is sort of where the action is, up in this quadrant, where you see high-cost items, where you'd like to see the savings come from, but there's limits to your ability to do so. The feasibility on this side is low, the feasibility over here may be high, depending on what the discretionary program is. You may have high savings and you may have, because it's highly discretionary, you may have the ability to reduce it. But there are some things that just can't be touched. Try reducing wages, try reducing healthcare, try reducing post-employment benefits. It's a very difficult thing to deal with most of municipal budgets by reduction, unless you're eliminating the position, renegotiating to get these things lower, it's just a very hard row to hoe. Further, over time, almost everything becomes less feasible. Almost everything becomes an entitlement. Over time, almost everything becomes the expectation of the community and it's very difficult to even begin to address those things. That's why healthcare is off-limits. That's why wages are hard to deal with. So the other way we can do it is by generating more. If we're going to keep taxes low, we have to generate more. The way you generate more is either by growth or by going out and finding some other revenue stream. Growth is the way that almost every property tax scheme in the world deals with, and for that matter, most taxing schemes deal with growth. The more people contributing into the system, the less burden on those who were earlier into the system. Fee-for-service discussions are interesting, but in reality, we're never going to get to a universe where children are asked to pay full tuition for a public education or where we put tolls on the bike paths. Fee-for-service is, it's just a relatively small part of what we can do. It's either growth or you've got to look to some other mechanism. Why do we do taxes? Why do we bother with this at all? We socialize the costs of maintaining public resources because it's cheaper and easier. Trying to figure out who to tax for use of the bicycle path or running down parents who don't have $21,000 to pay for the kid's tuition. Those problems are huge, they're highly inefficient, they would cause tremendous difficulties. Government would be essentially a large collection agency and it would be extremely inefficient as a service provider at that point. Just a little more on fees and fines. In our case, these are the numbers associated with fines, licenses, permits, hotel and meal tax. It adds up to about 24% of all of the revenue that we get. It's significant, but again, it's not going to outpace or offset the 76% that comes from motor vehicle and real estate taxes. So the question of growth is really just a question of the number of parcels, the number of property owners paying into the system, and the value of each of those parcels. The average value times the number is your total grand list or your total tax roll. That depends, the value depends on quality and the scarcity. Less land, it means it's more valuable, more desirable land, more valuable than that. The costs of subdivision, of course, can affect the number of parcels available. And those are regulatory, non-regulatory, sort of natural limits that we can't do anything about, improvements and neighborhood characteristics that we can do something about. These are all ripe areas, with a possible exception of nature, ripe areas for policy intervention to drive growth in responsible ways. It all comes back down to whether people can afford to move into town, whether they can afford to do a subdivision, whether they can afford to buy a parcel of scarce land. This is a graphic, or a modified version of a graphic, from the National Municipal Policy Network, talking about political feasibility and revenue sources. State income tax is a, not all that popular, tax, but it's a big deal tax. It's a tax that generates a lot of revenue. Sales tax, again, less popular on this side, but they generate revenue, they're useful. I will note that most folks who talk about property taxation say it's a progressive tax because the wealthy pay more than the modest homeowners, modest property owners. There is a regressive aspect to that, however, particularly in a community like South Kingstown, where people bought into a fast-appreciating market early and haven't necessarily seen their incomes go up. So the metric of wealth has increased greater than their income has. That's a regressive dimension to this tax. The other part of this graphic from the Municipal Policy Network is the exemptions portion. So these are sort of the elements of property tax exemption that the Municipal Policy Network thinks are important. The thing to note about this, more than anything else, is that the property tax exemption is not a revenue generator. It loses money. It's never going, you can't design an exemption so that it generates more. It's not an attractor. It's not a thing that if you give away money, you're going to get more back. That doesn't happen. This is a policy that is a decision to do something other than tax. It's not to generate revenue, it's to achieve some other policy objective. Inefficence versus non-inefficence, this is really what exemptions are all about. You either do it because you think you're going to give a benefit to somebody, you're going to do something good for some number of people, or you don't do it or you do it in a way that is designed to not do harm. You're exempting property because you don't want to injure farmers or something. The question is, should tax policy do as little harm as possible or should it do some good for some people at the expense of others? If it should do some good, then the question then becomes, what good are we trying to achieve? For whom and at whose expense? That question is really unavoidable. That is the core question when we're talking about exemptions. Who's getting what, from whom, and why? That's the question, or questions. It's important to note that exemptions are different from incentives. An exemption is just a categorical exclusion from tax liability. An incentive is a tax rule that's designed to encourage private action. Now, an exemption can be an incentive, but generally, property tax exemptions focus on the status of the taxpayer, not on his or her activity. It's not typically designed as an incentive. Exemptions are typically designed to be sort of entitlements based on the taxpayer's status. And you can see that when you look at the tax exemptions that we have in South Kingstown and in Rhode Island. We have a tax exemption for the blind, we have a tax exemption for the elderly, which is means-tested here in South Kingstown. We have an exemption for veterans. We have a nonprofit organization pilot agreement scheme that provides exemptions, or actually, it's an exemption plus a payment scheme. It's a complicated exemption in a way. We have an exemption for open space and one that I'll talk about later, which we do not have, but I'm going to suggest maybe an interesting policy alternative for us in South Kingstown. We move from beneficence, the idea that we're just doing it because these folks are in need and we want to provide a benefit to them, toward sort of incentive strategies. We're trying to get the NGOs to continue to provide the services that they provide to the poor, for example. We want to preserve the open space because it's a benefit to the community. So we're moving from a pure beneficence model to a more incentive-oriented model. Three dimensions of tax quality, which we have to keep in mind whenever we think about designing a new tax scheme, that is fairness. Does the tax treat similarly situated taxpayers in the same way? Is it not, it's not excessive. We want our tax schemes to be not overly burdensome. They shouldn't be unreasonable, they shouldn't confiscate property, they should be a reasonable tax rate. And is it reasonably and rationally related to the benefits of citizenship or residency? It would be unfair to tax someone for a property they could not use, they could not access, they could not make a benefit from. Efficiency, that is, the tax scheme generates revenue without requiring disproportionate effort by either private parties or by the government. And again, the property tax is actually a fairly efficient tax. All we have to know is value. After that, it's just a matter of sending out the letters and waiting for the checks to roll in. I mean, this is a pretty efficient scheme. You're not engaging in a whole lot of burdensome calculation or reevaluation, other than the every-three-years reevaluations that we do. It's a fairly efficient scheme. An obtrusiveness, does the tax unduly disrupt or distort private behaviors? This is an important thing. We don't want tax schemes that keep people from doing what they want to do. We don't want tax schemes that distort the marketplace, that get people making crazy decisions. With the property tax, one of my favorite examples of distorted behavior is when property tax rates get too high. It's not uncommon in communities to find that people do all of their repairs on the interior of the building and they let the exterior go to hell. Because if the taxman drives by and does a curbside assessment, it looks like hell and the value is low. But I'm living on the inside, I don't care what it looks like on the outside. That distortion contributes to a decayed look in communities, despite the fact that folks are actually hiding wealth on the interior of the building. So we have to watch our tax schemes to make sure that we're not becoming overly burdensome. So there's a couple of ways to do tax exemptions that I want to look at just briefly here, and that is, you can either give an absolute dollar amount. So California, for example, in its homestead exemption excludes $7,000 of value from the assessment. Narragansett does it as a percentage, 10% of the value of the property. An absolute dollar amount is much fairer if you're looking at sort of the progressiveness of the tax. Because $500 to a guy who owns a home worth $200,000 is worth a lot more than $500 to a guy who owns a million-dollar home. 10% on a $200,000 house is a lot less than 10% on a million-dollar house. So an absolute dollar amount is a fairer tax scheme than a percentage. When you think about obtrusiveness, an absolute dollar amount is also easier to deal with for the government's side. We know it's 500 bucks, we can calculate it, it's 500 by the number of exempt parties, we don't have to worry about recalculating the amount on an annual basis. And then finally, in terms of efficiency, it's probably about the same. There's a little bit of calculation involved in the variable amount, but not too much. So... There. Fancy movement there, sorry. These are our current tax exemptions. This is actually an important table because what we see here is we already... And again, the property tax is actually a fairly efficient tax. All we have to know is value. After that, it's just a matter of sending out the letters and waiting for the checks to roll in. I mean, this is a pretty efficient scheme. You're not engaging in a whole lot of burdensome calculation or reevaluation, other than the every three years reevaluations that we do. It's a fairly efficient scheme. An obtrusiveness, does the tax unduly disrupt or distort private behaviors? This is an important thing. We don't want tax schemes that keep people from doing what they want to do. We don't want tax schemes that distort the marketplace, that get people making crazy decisions. With the property tax, one of my favorite examples of distorted behavior is when property tax rates get too high. It's not uncommon in communities to find that people do all of their repairs on the interior of the building, and they let the exterior go to hell. Because if the taxman drives by and does a curbside assessment, it looks like hell and the value is low. But I'm living on the inside, I don't care what it looks like on the outside. That distortion contributes to a decayed look in communities, despite the fact that folks are actually hiding wealth on the interior of the building. So we have to watch our tax schemes to make sure that we're not becoming overly burdensome. So there's a couple of ways to do tax exemptions that I want to look at just briefly here, and that is, you can either give an absolute dollar amount. So California, for example, in its homestead exemption excludes $7,000 of value from the assessment. Narragansett does it as a percentage, 10% of the value of the property. An absolute dollar amount is much fairer if you're looking at sort of the progressiveness of the tax. Because $500 to a guy who owns a home worth $200,000 is worth a lot more than $500 to a guy who owns a million-dollar home. 10% on a $200,000 house is a lot less than 10% on a million-dollar house. So an absolute dollar amount is a fairer tax scheme than a percentage. When you think about obtrusiveness, an absolute dollar amount is also easier to deal with for the government's side. We know it's 500 bucks, we can calculate it, it's 500 by the number of exempt parties, we don't have to worry about recalculating the amount on an annual basis. And then finally, in terms of efficiency, it's probably about the same. There's a little bit of calculation involved in the variable amount, but not too much. These are our current tax exemptions. This is actually an important table, because what we see here is we already exempt $21 million, well, let me back up. We already do not collect $21 million worth of taxes each year. These are the tax value numbers associated with each of these exemptions. The blind exemption is $11,928. The statutory exemptions, which includes churches, charter schools, University of Rhode Island, that generates $19 million worth of, well, would generate $19 million worth of taxes that we do not collect because the properties are exempt. The grand total of non-collected taxes, $21,748,000. So what's wrong with adding another property tax exemption? Well, philosophically, property tax exemptions don't change the underlying drivers. They don't change the structure of our consumer preferences. They don't change the cost of fuel. They don't change the cost of providing a teacher-to-student ratio of, you know, 11 to 1. They don't address the underlying structural issues. They simply shift funds around from one taxpayer to another. They cannot slow the increase in the costs, and they don't change the demands. I've said all that, sorry. Why might a homestead exemption actually be a good idea? It does take some of the bite out of the increased values that are beyond the control of longtime residents. A homestead exemption might encourage longtime residents to stay in South Kingstown. It might project a user-friendly tax structure, which might attract new homeowners to South Kingstown. These are all plausible hypotheses. If designed to promote fairness, it might maintain economic diversity. So again, if we get to that $500 versus 10% thing, if we're giving $500 to everybody, then the low-income households may see a benefit that improves their capacity to stay. So it could be designed to have that kind of impact. Why might a homestead exemption be a bad idea? It would certainly increase, absolutely, positively, without a doubt, would certainly increase the tax rate for commercial property owners, the way that homestead exemptions are traditionally designed here in Rhode Island and everywhere else. Homestead exemptions apply to residential property, and since you are exempting some residential property, you have to make up the difference somewhere else. Commercial property and seasonal property is where you make it up. Poorly-designed homestead exemptions do not address individual ability to pay, and therefore, the need for tax relief can be disproportionately distributed to the wealthy. That's the 10% Narragansett model, frankly. Verifying the eligibility for an exemption is challenging and would almost certainly require us, if we were to do this here, to hire new staff. It is a bit of a bear. Gene's got a funny story about, where was it, the guy who got back in his car?
Lincoln.
Guy comes into Lincoln, he applies for his homestead exemption, the clerk says, "Well, do you have your driver's license?" He says, "No, I don't drive." Says, "Well, you're not registered to vote here." Goes, "No, I don't vote, I never participated in voting, that's a stupid process, I don't want anything to do with that." Says, "Okay." Gives him the form, fills out the form, she watches him walk out the door and get into his car with Massachusetts plates on it. She runs out and says, "What are you doing? You can't get a homestead exemption if you live in Massachusetts." That problem is a challenge for the folks who are implementing this homestead exemption So if we were to do it, I would suggest that it's really got to be one that is based on an absolute dollar amount, not one that's based on a percentage. But it may not be our best alternative. There are other things that we can and should be doing that may yield a better tax relief strategy over time. We should be advocating for an increase in state aid. This discussion about the transportation provision of the state funding formula for education is exactly the kind of thing we should be screaming about. That is something we can do something about, I hope, and I think that is something we should be doing. We don't really have the opportunity here to look for the authority to get a sales tax, but there's no reason why we shouldn't be having that conversation, why we shouldn't make some noise about that. And then, well, one last thought here. We could and probably should be thinking about whatever we design as having a needs element to it. For the last year, I've heard folks talk about the need to make the place affordable for young people, the need to not be forcing folks who grew up here out of town. Those are income-based things, they're not asset problems. They're problems around the income that folks have got. Circuit breakers are different than exemptions. Circuit breakers say, "You're going to pay the same rate as everybody else until it's such a burden that you can't, and then, when you come looking for relief, you'll find it. So we're going to tax everybody's property at the same rate. When the rate gets to be too burdensome, we're going to adjust."
So Rob, on that last slide, the concern I would have with something like that is that income doesn't always determine wealth. So someone--
Someone could have, you know, a decent amount of assets--
Right.
--but their income is very low, they could qualify, potentially.
That's correct. And in fact, that's the design. The design is for the couple that bought their house in 1990, the market's gone crazy, the building is now, they paid $250,000 for it in 1990, it's now worth $2.5 million, and they just don't have the income. They're retirees, you don't want to force those folks out of their home. And the way you do that is by looking to their income and saying, "You're going to get the relief because you shouldn't be forced out of your home."
Right, but I guess it also depends on what kind of assets we're talking about.
Yep. And all of these are design questions. All of these are what kind of policy, you know, should we have in place? And those are all, you know, you could do it so that it's not the second home, it's not the fourth, you know, whatever you'd think makes sense there, that kind of thing be worked in. Now, our ability to do some of these things is limited. These are offered as sort of archetypes and, you know, thought exercises, so that when we're thinking about what to do with property tax policy, we're thinking broadly, we're thinking about the elements that we can play with, we can work with. Now finally, I'd like to suggest this. This is an idea that came up with the Affordable Housing Collaborative. The Affordable Housing Collaborative has said, "Look, we recognize that an incentive to get folks to build affordable housing would be a good thing. Under our current zoning, most South Kingstown property owners can build an accessory apartment in the back of their lot." But nobody does it. Yeah, some of them get done. I think we had 54 of them built over the last, how many? 54 of these units have been built over the last 20 years. But there's a law on the books that says you can build them, and you can rent them out, and they become, you know, affordable rental units. We have a mechanism for doing this. We could incentivize that by coming up with a scheme. Hypothetically, for the first five years after you construct an accessible, or I'm sorry, an accessory apartment, for the first five years, you're not going to be taxed on that structure. We're still going to charge you the tax that we charge on the main house, just as we always have, but for five years, or three years, or whatever the number, you know, whatever is appropriate, you're not going to be taxed on that second structure. In that time, you're going to have income coming in, so there's a real economic benefit to it. We're incentivizing the behavior that we say we want, the construction of affordable units, but we're not doing it based on some sense of just what's good for some group of folks, and we're not doing harm to anyone else, because the same tax revenue is coming in from the main houses that have these lots coming in. The burden there is fairly minimal, it's more traffic on the streets, it's, you know, a little bit more congestion and density in the urban areas that we've said we want more density in. So I think the upshot for me is, having looked at the various exemption strategies, I'm inclined to say, if we're going to do something with property taxes, we should try to incentivize, not just carve out an exemption. And if we're really keenly focused on affordable housing, that's where we should target our attention. So that's all I've got for a presentation. I just wanted to--
I just have a question about the accessory units. So it said in a public sewer accessible lot, right? A lot that's serviced by public sewers.
Yes.
There are many, many lots that are septic here, right?
Yes.
So what happens then? Tell me the process.
So I've actually pulled this provision of the ordinance out. You can do it with in-septic areas as well, but those aren't necessarily the places where you'd want to incentivize that construction. You might prefer, well, you can do it in South Kingstown, in any zone other than the R200 zone. The R200 is the two-acre zone. There, you have to get a special permit. In every other zone, it can be done as a right. The issue becomes, if you're doing it in one-acre zoning, and one-acre zoning that's not close to the sewer, are you promoting infill that's not really infill? Are you promoting suburbanization as opposed to the infill that we've said is the objective? So that's not, this isn't the full ordinance. The full ordinance is much richer and much broader.
I just know, many of the streets in the core of Wakefield, what we call the urban district, are not serviced by sewers. I live on one of those streets, you know, so that, my daughter lives on Pond Street, they don't have sewers where she is. She's right at the last curve. Still urban, it's our urban district. So I think that might be something to look at, if the septic system can accept--
Yep.
--the extra bedroom, right?
The current zoning would allow it. The current zoning would allow for us to incentivize 750-square-foot accessory structures in that area, or a 750-foot addition on the back of the house. So yes, so long as the septic system can receive, that would be permissible, under current zoning.
That is permissible.
That is now, yes.
It's the way that was written.
I've pulled the two, I've pulled two provisions out of what's probably four or five paragraphs.
All right. Just wanted to be clear that I understood what was currently acceptable.
Yep.
Thanks for that presentation, Rob. So this is something, I assume that the affordable housing study is going to look into, these types of policy prescriptions--
I don't know, have we specifically asked them to look at tax or other incentives? I don't think we have. I don't think we have.
Well, okay. Is it something--
So the question, though, is whether we could have Horsley Witten evaluate this. They're planners. Whether we could ask them to evaluate whether other communities have successfully implemented these sorts of plans? We might be able to do that. What's that? Are they? And is it working? Yeah, see? Look at that.
So I appreciate all the documentation we got from Gene, the memos and the, just a couple of comments on this. One is, early in your presentation, it indicated that this, the drive behind this is to save some, say elderly who have been here for a long time, or young people to come in. But the real issue, to me, is overall spending. So this doesn't change overall spending. You're still spending the same amount of money, you give a break to one sector of the community, because you admit that we spend too much money, we have to give you this break, and then you penalize a couple of other sectors, right? So commercial will pay more, seasonal property owners will pay more, they don't live here. I think it goes against affordable housing in that now, non-owner-occupied rental housing has a higher tax bill, and that landlord will pass that on to that tenant. I don't think the landlord is going to pay it.
So I certainly agree that an exemption that is designed poorly penalizes outsiders in a way that is potentially injurious to the economy, and serves as a disincentive to landlords, because they're not occupying the property, right? That doesn't mean, however, that you can't design a scheme that is beneficial to the community. My point in the presentation isn't so much these things are good or bad, but there's a bunch of good or bad elements that you have to cobble together to get to a tax policy that achieves whatever objectives it is that the community has. If the objective is to build or have built more affordable housing, we have to figure out how to aim the tax incentives, exemptions, taxing scheme, so that you're encouraging that behavior. You don't want to give the benefit away simply because somebody can sign a document that says, "Yeah, I qualify." You want them to be doing something for the benefit that they're getting. And that doing of something, the incentivizing and action requires the tax-making body to decide, you know, to think through what it is you want them to do, and what it is that's going to help them do that. Now again, I think the idea of, the Affordable Housing Collaborative's idea of giving an incentive, not taxing, putting money in somebody's pocket essentially, giving them the money that they otherwise would pay for the taxes for a period of time, does serve as an incentive to build affordable housing. If I already have the right to do it, the only thing that's really preventing me from doing it right now is either I don't know about it, a well-advertised program, A, get folks thinking about it, or it's just too much hassle. Yes, I may generate $1,000 a month in rental income, but it's going to cost me $30,000 to build the unit, and it's going to cost me $2,000, $3,000 a year in taxes, eh, it's going to take me forever to break even, I'm not going to bother with it, it's too much hassle. So if we can change that math, if we can change that calculation, we may actually encourage people to do what we're hoping people will do, which is build infilled affordable housing.
Yeah, and so, in my opinion, you haven't fixed the core problem. The core problem to the elderly person who lives on Tucker Town Road is that you're spending too much money. My taxes are going up, you spend too much money. So you've admitted to me that we're going to give this incentive--
Right.
--right? And for three years, you won't have to pay any taxes, because we know it's unfair, but we'll guarantee you in three years, you'll be in that same lousy system.
Well, that's right. And in fact, what you're doing over time is increasing the number of parcels. You're growing the grand list, you're growing the tax rule, so that if you do constrain your spending, and at the same time grow the grand list, or grow the property rule, what you end up with is, three years out, it obviously is rolling as these things come up.
Sure.
But at some point in the future, you have higher-valued property, more units in the inventory, therefore, the burden on each of the units should be lower because you've got more of them. You're dividing the tax need by more parcels.
Yep. And part of the equation, I want you to point me to the year where we spent less money.
That's right. And it doesn't. I mean, the truth of the matter is inflation drives everybody's budget up. It drives every business's budget up, it drives every municipality's budget up.
Right, but as we've seen in this budget year, for instance, what drove us to the preliminary figure was our ceiling.
What drove us to--
I don't want to get into the budget discussion, but the example I'm using is that controlling spending. So an observation I've made in the Charahoe District, for instance, is that Charleston has a sweetheart deal, because they're the host community. School spending is the biggest item, that's why I'm bringing this up, right? Charleston's a host community, everybody in Charleston gets a sweetheart deal. And Trish, you might correct me on this, and please do. One year, Richmond gets hammered, the next year, and then they get nuts, and they vote the budget down, but they don't have enough clout to vote it all down. Next year, Hopkinton gets hammered with the big increase, right? And all their taxpayers are up in arms, and Richmond goes, "Well, they left us alone." I see some similarities here, that, you know, Charleston sits by, good for them, they cut a good deal in the original deal, but the other two communities are not treated fairly every year. But the other two communities are not treated fairly every year, right? And so then only one of them is mad every year. And the other one keeps quiet because they left us alone this year. I see a few similarities in making special deals. Now, an elderly exemption, that's income, a veteran's exemption, a blind exemption, those are different. And you pointed that out in the demonstration, that they have a different goal. So those are, those are my reasons for wanting to blow this up.
So I have different reasons. I have philosophical, I think, reasons for not, not being on board an exemption for a group of people. And I think that makes us, pits us against one another, us against them. And the, if I'm the them who's getting the exemption, I'm looking at my neighbor and saying, gee, they went to Florida for an awful long time this year and they have a homestead exemption. And philosophically, I have a huge problem with this. Never mind the cost of implementing it and all of those things. I think the divisiveness in the community would be exacerbated by something like this. I can see why neighboring communities might have gone there because of the reliance on seasonal, not summer residents who are there, own the homes, go there, spend the money, on the winter residents who are not contributing as much to the community economically. So I understand why the residents in neighboring communities might have gone there, but I think it, I think it speaks to a divisiveness that I don't want any part of.
Couple of things. One, I think from, I'll take Providence as an example. I don't know where they stand now, but I know in years past, they had a 50% exemption for the homestead, which they have a large commercial base and I get that. But at the same time, if you were a property owner as buying property in that city, instead of paying, you know, $5,000 like the house next door, you're paying $10,000 for your taxes. And if that's an investment property, that money is being generated by people's rents that they pay. So one of the concerns I have, like even with any kind of an exemption, is we take our town, we have a relatively small, very small commercial base. Where do you make that difference up? But I also agree that I think our major problem is overall spending. But at the same time, I think we need to be clear on the fact that this ordinance, and again, I could be wrong, but it's 750 square feet. I think you can have a maximum of one bedroom. Is that correct? Two bedrooms? Sorry, I always thought it was one. Certainly, if we do it a three-year abatement, once you hit that four-year, we should see an increase in taxes on those homes that have done the developments in that year one and then obviously effectively over time for those in year two, year three.
This is a very common, you know, strategy for commercial development. You see this in a lot of municipalities across the country where you give the developer a tax treaty or a tax abatement for a number of years, five, seven are not uncommon in commercial development. And those are big projects. The thought here is that you could do it on a small scale and encourage the mom and pop would-be landlords to build a little apartment in the backyard.
If we wanted to think about the possibility of tax abatement for a certain number of years on significant investment in land and buildings by commercial entities, is that something we could consider as well?
Yes, we already have that authority. And actually, a second thing that we'd do, I think we have to talk to Amy Reiner's husband because it sounds like they're doing this in Groton and it may be, it may be a model of, or the non-commercial for the residential.
The only other thing I want to add is I would like, if we're thinking about this, I think we should also make sure that current state laws would allow for this to happen. And then the other thing that I was reading about was, I believe, and I could be completely wrong, that this would, accessory dwellings would not count towards the state mandate of affordable units.
I don't know why that would be. Yeah. So you could condition it, you could actually give multiple levels. My whole presentation, I hope folks understand, my point here is that there's a lot of elements we, I'm not suggesting this is, again, a good thing to do or a bad thing to do. We can design a tax program that says if you make it Big A affordable, deed restricted affordable, you get 100% abatement for five years. If you make it Small A affordable, that is, it's going to be affordable just because it's a small apartment, you get a three-year abatement and you only get it for 75% of the value. You can design these things so that you are encouraging people at different levels or encouraging people to engage in slightly different behaviors as you go. So you're right. I mean, we've got to think through if we're going to do something like this, what it is we want to achieve and what it is folks have successfully done elsewhere and what we think we need to do in order to go to the legislature and say, this is our plan. Give us the authority to do this taxation this way.
Rob, can you speak to the specifics as our existing ability to provide tax abatement for a certain number of years on commercial properties? Or toward commercial business for investment in land and buildings up to a certain amount?
Yeah, Mike's probably a better explainer of our current tax authority, but it's essentially negotiated on a one-off kind of basis.
You weren't around, I don't think, Rory, when the hotel that is going up in the Commons, they wanted to take advantage of our tax treaty. The council has lots of discretion as to whether or not you're going to grant it. And when it was designed, the whole idea was you want to bring in jobs, right? So you want to reward commercial development that brings in jobs. I think the thought was that Hotel was going to have maybe one full-time manager and a lot of part-time people. So why would we give a tax treaty? And Chelsea, we never did, right? We never gave it to the hotel. Not the second time.
They did not show that they had an actual need for the treaty because in year two they were making money.
They were, yeah.
Is this the new hotel?
Yeah, the new one.
The Fairfield.
The Fairfield, right, right. I'm using that as an example that just because it's a commercial property that comes into town, it doesn't mean they automatically qualify. And I don't have the ordinance in front, but there are a number of hoops that you need to go through to show, you know, that if you get the tax treaty, I'm not paying taxes. Instead, I'm going to use those savings to invest and grow and employ people, you know, et cetera, et cetera. The fact is, you have that ability today to do that if there's someone interested in coming into town and building and establishing themselves. It already is on the books, on the commercial side.
So Mike, no, and I haven't looked at this. Do you know whether that authority would extend to this would-be landlord? Do you think the authority already exists?
I don't think so. I think for a residential program, we would need some legislation. And there's no, I think we can easily get the legislation. You know, this whole idea of encouraging the development of affordable units, therefore increasing the total number of units in return for some kind of tax break. We clearly need legislation because everything we do from a tax perspective in any municipality, that authority comes straight from the state because the overall rule is that everyone pays the same full and fair, based on full and fair cash value. You can't discriminate against people. And the way we do discriminate is we just get enabling legislation that says, under this set of circumstances, we're allowed to do this, meaning the three-year break, the five-year break. So I think that would be easy legislation to get passed.
I think if it's achieving an affordable housing, I would
Real easy. Real easy. I think that goes, Rory, to your concern, and you mentioned it at the last council meeting, is that someone like you, what a shame that you can't afford to buy a house in this town, right? So how, it's you and everyone else in your situation, young professionals that can't afford to buy a house. Well, that's craziness. It sounds like this is a way to do it. And at the same time, to grow the tax base and eventually reduce theoretically, but you're right, Joe, when the taxes ever go down, death in taxes. Someone did a study in Tiverton, one of the counselors there who was into all math and whatever. What he figured out is that the town of Tiverton could increase its taxes 2% a year and it would be sustainable. That would be above the rate of inflation and that would theoretically keep up with people's income, keep up with the increased value, et cetera. But it was interesting, as soon as it went over 2%, it was no longer sustainable. And then you start that snowball effect. If it's 3% and then now you're starting with a bigger base and then you add another 3% on that or whatever. But 2%, again, it was for Tiverton, Tiverton's tax base, Tiverton's assessed value, et cetera. But in general, it was a pretty convincing study about how 2% is sustainable. Good bill. Now, as you point out, you did what, 1.65% this year, but in order to get there, you needed to go right to the
As a general principle, I've always thought that trying to keep your tax increases to inflation is just good policy. If people are paying more for milk and more for gas, they should be paying no more for government services than that. That just, it's a good, you know, it's a good rule of thumb, if you like. It's just a good way to think about our relationship in a larger economy. We shouldn't be outpacing the basket of goods that is the rate of inflation. We should be right in there with the basket of goods.
And of course, it's a lot more complicated when you think that one of the reasons for our problem this year is because, as was pointed out, the state keeps reducing what they give us towards our school aid. Well, so there's a hole that taxpayers here have to make up just to stay even, let alone, you know? But that's a whole different issue.
So if we wanted to move forward to have the ability to allow tax abatement for a certain number of years on accessory dwellings for homeowners, would we, would there be any action by the council taken before we encourage legislation to allow us to do so?
So it might make sense. And Chelsea, I'd be interested to hear whether, how you think the Affordable Housing Collaborative would embrace or shy away from a charge to start doing some investigation on this? I mean, they've been talking about it, but.
Hi. Yeah, the Affordable Housing Collaborative has already talked about it at two of their meetings. It's scheduled on their meeting for next Thursday. I think they generally really like the idea. Anything in their view that can get more, both Big A and Little A affordable housing is good for the town in their perspective. So if you sort of gave them some direct direction that said, keep exploring this and bring a proposal or recommendation back to us, I think they would embrace that.
It's a place to begin. I'm happy to spend, you know, time and resources myself trying to talk to the folks in Groton, trying to find out who else has done something like a commercial property tax abatement program for residential development. I'm sure they're out there. I just, we haven't done that research.
So if we directed the Affordable Housing Collaborative to dig into this and report back to us as to advising us on their position on it, what would be the turnaround time on that?
They're gonna, it's already on their agenda for Thursday. So if they think they can get a recommendation at their Thursday, at their meeting next Thursday, seems a little
I just don't think it makes a lot of sense for us to go with an opinion-based recommendation. I do think that we've got to have an empirical evaluation done by somebody, the Affordable Housing Collaborative. Horsley Whitney would be better. I'd like to have some, some way of saying, this has been the experience in Groton, this has been the experience in Cleveland, this has been the experience, and be able to say this works because we've seen it work in several places.
I'm also curious to know if the communities that have gone away from the, I think Gene indicated, two communities in Rhode Island no longer have
So we've moved this conversation, I think, from homestead exemption to an alternative sort of construction incentive. You're right. Providence isn't doing homestead exemption anymore. There's a, exemptions are tough. Incentives are tough, but not necessarily as flawed, in my view. So I think, I'm encouraged by the notion that we're going to look at incentives. I'm encouraged by the notion that we're not going to just divide the community into worthy and unworthy groups. I think that that's, that's healthy. I think it is better to go with activity encouraging incentives rather than status-rewarding programs. So the question then becomes, how do you get the data so that you can be relatively confident that the program is likely to have the result you want it to have? And so that you can right-size it? You know it's two years or three years or five years. It's 75%. It's 100%. It's, you know, a sliding scale. It could be, you know, 100% in the first year, down to zero in the fifth year, going down, stepping down each year. There's a lot of ways to design that. I'd be happy to work with the collaborative, the collaborative, and figure this out. I think it's going to take us, it's going to take us two or three months to get a solid report back to the council. By solid, I mean an empirical, here's what's happened out there in the world. This is what we recommend.
Just for the sake of the legislative calendar, is it possible to put in something that would get us authority to be able to put in place the policy and then have time to actually do the?
Yeah, I can certainly draft a bill along the lines of what we discussed this evening and make it flexible enough so that you'd have the ability to fill in the blanks on number of years and percentages and all that type of thing. It would be better to have what you're going to do in place first. And obviously, we're at the end of the session, although muni bills can be introduced at any time. I'm just thinking out loud right now, I think the better, it'd be better if we had a thoughtful plan in place that the legislation is based on, instead of just quickly getting something, because it's too late to do this for this next fiscal year, no matter what. And I'm thinking if we introduced a bill in January, it would get adopted and then you'd have it for July 1 of the next fiscal year. So I think my advice would be to wait first and not try to just rush something through today.
I think that's right. I think this is a big, this is a big step. I mean, this is a big change. It's not going to hurt anyone because we're not taxing anybody anymore. But still, it's designed to encourage behavior that is going to be felt on the ground. There'll be new units built.
And the auxiliary units, the ordinance now that allows them obviously was vetted through zoning, like setbacks, that kind of thing. I'm concerned a little bit about running into those roadblocks.
They follow the same zoning rules as any accessory structure if it's detached from your principal residence. So if it's, it would be the same as a garage, for an example. If it's attached to your structure, then it's the same setbacks and lot coverage as your principal structure would be.
So maybe we might want to look at those setbacks because I think a lot of lots are, you know, we've got a lot of quarter acre and less
Yeah, and in
the urban district, which are not going to meet the requirements, right?
Yeah.
The setbacks are going to be too, too great for anyone in those situations to be able to move forward. So perhaps that needs a look as well.
I'm trying to think about how, so they're allowed by right on a non-conforming lot in the R-10, so let's say it's a 6,000 square foot lot, your setbacks are actually six feet, not 10, where they would be in a 10, R-10. So they're already adjusted because you're non-conforming. And you don't need, maybe this is a question for Mike, if it's allowed by right, do you need a special use permit to intensify the non-conforming use?
That's a good question.
Right?
That's why I'm looking at you.
Yeah, and that's why I'm looking at Mike.
Yeah. Intensifying a non-conforming use always needs
Right. So if you're on a 6,000, then you would need a special use permit.
So I'd like to see that explored.
Make it easier, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I want to see the path
Easy.
straight. So someone's Straight. So someone's not stuck in zoning and planning and, you know...
Another disincentive.
Paying another lawyer, not...
Right. And a public, and a public hearing.
You don't want to pay another lawyer, right, to come and...
Right, and a notice for public hearing.
I'd like to see a clear path, I think.
Yeah, and if we, if we sort of take some time and think this through, then that could certainly be part of the sort of package of amendment.
So that suggests what we're, sort of rough timeline, what you're looking to do is get the incentive model designed over the next three or four months. Have the planning board look at that and say, "Okay, how do we maximize that design in zoning?" Have zoning regulatory changes, if needed, done toward the end of the year. Have introduction of legislation in January of next year, and sort of have something to start talking about and encouraging people to do, before we've got a Horsley-Witten study complete.
Well, and I was, I was going to say that the Horsley-Witten study should be, you know, we should have zoning language recommendations in hand in the fall. And that part, the "how do you make it easier in zoning" part, is certainly part of their study. So if we wanted their input on that, so we talked about how the tax stuff is not part of that contract, but the zoning stuff is, that's their forte, that's what we've paid them to do.
If we gave them a packet and said, "This is the incentive we're thinking about, how would you make this work?"
Right. Then they could incorporate it into their overall package of recommended language.
Sounds like a great point.
Chelsea, you said there's a, is there a list of the 54 properties, or you...
We have them on a map. Which you have, although I bet you won't be able to find it, it's written up on the list.
And then I guess the other quick question I have is, when did the, when did this particular ordinance go into effect?
I'm really bad with dates, but I think it was '96, because I think that's how far the map goes back.
So would it be safe to say that some of those dwellings already existed at some point, potentially, on these properties?
Yeah.
And I guess the only reason I'm asking, because it'd be a good idea, I think, to also kind of see how they play into the landscape on the ones that currently exist. What do they look like?
And I think that, again, that piece of it is part of what Horsley-Witten's going to look at, right? They're going to look at specifically the villages that exist, Peastville, Wakefield, Kingston, as their focus, and look at the patterns that exist today, and the unit types that exist today, and how those things compare to what you can and can't do. And then incorporate that into their zoning work. So in, you know, Wakefield and Peastville, there might already be examples where this is done really well, but you can't necessarily do it because of X, Y, Z reason. So they're going to look at those things as things that people are likely already comfortable with, and incorporate them into the language. Well, we can, we can send that map around to everybody, so you have it.
I think I hear a lot of support for the incentive model in general. I think this particular policy could be a nice tool in the toolbox, trying to get some more, really little A affordable housing available in town. I think it also provides potential income stream for people who are here. So those are great benefits. You know, it doesn't have the benefits for those people in town who are, you know, struggling with taxes, can't afford to build an accessory dwelling. So I want to hear more about sort of your circuit breaker discussion at some point. But I also think we should expand the incentive conversation. You know, we have a lack of commercial property and commercial activity, and I think similarly, we need to think of incentives that, and zoning changes and incentives, that combine together to provide more commercial opportunities. And then I think we need, you know, we're going to be having a massive amount of land come online from school closure. So we need to think, I think, long and hard about the incentives that we might offer around that for the development of commerce, affordable housing, what have.
So I just had a thought that I wouldn't want to see these accessory structures used as a weekly rental income stream, right? I don't know how we could address that. We're looking for housing that's affordable for residents, for year-round residents. And I, something in me is saying this would be an easy...
So one of the really nice things about tax policy is because it's a forbearance, you get to, you get to define the limits very well. You could always say, "If you cease to use it for rental units on a yearly basis, then the tax abatement goes away," or the tax treatment is different.
That would also be true for anything that you would require a deed restriction for. So if you say, you know, "We're going to give you a longer amount of time, or more of a percentage in a reduction," if you deed restrict to a low or moderate income family, those would be monitored for year-round occupancy.
It's a really flexible tool. It's an underused, tax policy is just an underused tool. It's a hard thing to do, because you're trying to balance a lot of different pieces. But once you get it right, I think it can...
I do feel that also, if we go down this path, at some point, and say we're going to get to the point of implementation, I think there needs to be an education component to that, or some kind of strategy to put the information out there into the community. And I bring that up because we were at the Affordable Housing, I don't know if it was a, call it a seminar, I guess, that we put on at the Holiday Inn with the Kent Washington Board of Realtors, and you brought that up, and you asked that question, and it was kind of like not what I expected. You know, the reaction of the crowd was...
Mixed.
Very mixed.
We had realtors who said, "Three years is not enough, nobody's going to bother." We had realtors who said, "Of course, I could, I could get people to do that, you know, very easily if that incentive was in place." So I think that there is a need for folks to understand it, and we've got to talk to people to figure out what it should be. I think we do need to...
The other thing, I think there was some confusion with some folks thinking you're turning single families into multi-families. I don't, you know, that's not the thing that we're doing, in my opinion.
So that's actually an interesting point. Someone from Shab asked the question, "Are you talking about a multifamily model?" And my initial reaction was, "No." But in fact, you're multifamily enabling the parcel, because it's a rental unit in the back. It's a multifamily parcel at that.
I think, yeah, I mean, it's just, it depends who's defining the word, right? Multifamily is anything that is more than one unit on a property, and so yes, it would be multifamily. Under our zoning, we have a different definition for multifamily and what that is. And it's not allowed everywhere, and it's just different.
So, you know, there's some houses where you see a large main house and maybe a small cottage.
Yep.
Would you, in your, I mean, I guess you could consider that multi, but all of those, in my opinion, are listed as single, yeah, single family.
Yeah, so under zoning, if it's under 750 square feet, it would be an accessory apartment, and so it wouldn't trigger the review thresholds for some, a multi-household project.
But from the state's analysis, it's probably a multifamily.
Multifamily, yeah. Right. So when, like Rhode Island, Rhode Island Housing, Housing Network...
Works.
Housing Works, right, does that yearly book and says, "Who enables multifamily and who doesn't?" I think with this, we would be higher on that list, right? Because it is technically multifamily, it's just not the same, it's not the same format that you typically find in an urban area.
And just one last thing that I noticed, and now I'll forward it to Rob, and he can forward it to the council. I think there were some other communities that have, might have similar things like this in place, but specifically towards elderly, or people over a certain age, for aging in place.
Again, you can design it, you really can make it, I mean, there's some limits, obviously. We can't discriminate based on impermissible demographic criteria. We can't, we can't grossly enrich one class of people and cause injury to another. There are limits, but it's a very flexible tool.
So I think the other thing to note, and what I've learned, sort of talking to other planners about accessory apartments in general, is that most Rhode Island communities outside of the urban areas do not allow them by right. And so South Kingston's in a really unique place, where, long before, you know, I was here, the council and the planning board decided that that's what they wanted to do. And so when we talk about it, people go, "Oh, you mean for family members?" And I say, "No, for anybody. It's for anybody who wants to live there." And there's some confusion about that, too. So the Affordable Housing Collaborative is really interested, if this were to move forward, to help with that sort of education piece with people, about what is it, what does it look like, how do I do it? We'd find some help there.
And would we have concerns about wastewater treatment capacity with this?
So the short answer is, I don't know. We obviously have to bring John Shock into the conversation before we, and again, I think we need to talk to the experts and get some sense of what we should really be expecting here. If we think that this whole thing is likely to produce 54 units a year, that's quite a few. That's about what we see in new construction across town now. We'd be doubling our new units, if that were the case. Now, they're small units, but we'd still be adding significantly. So we'd want to have that conversation with John Shock.
I know relative to single families that are served by OWTS now, when a building permit comes in for an accessory apartment, the building official checks to make sure their DEM, OWTS permit services the correct number of bedrooms. So it would be the main house plus the one bedroom for the accessory.
Yeah, my concern is municipal, you know, the municipal sewer system. My sense is we have...
Stress is, would this put on that?
My sense is we have capacity, we have quite a bit of capacity, but again, I want to have that.
So Chelsea, you mentioned other communities. And in my experience, there's been a lot of communities or a lot of places in the state where you find dwellings that are not legitimate. And off the top of my head, I could think of one or two in the town of South Kingston that I don't know if they're legal or not. But I think we'd also have to have a piece in place where hopefully we can help those folks bring those on as legitimate...
Performance, yeah.
You know, accessory dwellings, and not something that they might have built at some point that no one noticed.
That's a really good point. I've been looking at properties, panicked over the last couple of weeks, and...
When you get the map.
A number of those, right, where, "Oh, and there's this little apartment here," you know? Yeah, quiet little apartment. So I would really like to see us be able to bring those people out of the shadows and sanction those things, because some of them were actually really viable little apartments, you know?
Yeah, and I think one of the things Horsley-Witten, I think, will look at, too, and it might go to some of that, is that size restriction, that 750, to see if that's really a tenable size. And I could see people, you know, "I want to do 800, so I'm not going to permit that thing," right? "I want to do a little bit bigger." So that would be my one sort of catch, to say, "Well, is it legal under the definition? And if it's not, then what does that mean for us? What do we want to do about it?"
You know, I mean, what I've seen are houses that have been divided, right? Not, not accessory structures in the backyard.
Yeah, so that would be a...
We'd like to see those come out of the shadows.
Right. And that, so in, under our definition, that would be a duplex, right? If it's two, two greater than 750, that would be a duplex definition, which, again, is not really allowed in a lot of places. But the Horsley-Witten work will look at whether it should be allowed in more places and in different formats.
The only other thought I just had is that, not in South Kingston. In other places of new construction, people play games and tricks on, like, let's say, for instance, you have a four-bedroom ISDS. You take one of the bedrooms, you turn it into a study to get your CO, and then you put the door up in closet and afterwards. So I just think we need to be, we need to be a little bit careful on if, in fact, it's one bedroom for the 750, that that...
Stays one bedroom.
Stays one bedroom. Because you could, you could make a 750 square foot two-bedroom, if you really wanted to.
So is there any, so I can foresee sort of older couples, children have all fled the coop, they want to build the accessory dwelling, they move into it, that's their main dwelling, and put the bigger house. Is there anything that prevents...
No, they could do that. They, the rule right now is that the owner of the property has to leave in, live in one or one of the dwellings for six months out of the year. So even if they wanted to live in the apartment for six months, and then go to Florida for six months, that would be okay.
Or you could live six months during the winter in the dwelling.
Yeah. Well, that would, I think, go against Councilwoman Kelso's point, that she doesn't want it to be seasonal.
Well, no, but the rule technically was on, I'm sorry, the rule was really on the accessory, like, I don't think it can control what someone does with their main house.
Right, but the tax abatement would...
There you go.
Kick it, when that was happening, right? That's...
If you find out.
Correct, correct. And a Winnebago doesn't qualify as an accessory structure, right? Because I've seen that as well.
No, and I don't think...
I should take the wheels off and mount it on cinder blocks.
And I don't think those tiny houses on wheels count either.
Right.
You can park one of those in your backyard.
Do we have any of those here?
Haven't seen any.
I saw one, I think, I'm sorry.
I think I've seen one, the park next to the oyster bar. There might have been one in there.
Do we have anything governing those tiny houses here?
Don't, as far as I know.
No? No, it can't be a peddler, but beyond that...
There you go. Let's not go there tonight.
All right, so I think we have, we have some direction. And I think we have a rough kind of attack here.
All right, very good. Any final comments? Is there a strong desire for public comment on these issues here? All right, I'm just going to end the meeting.
Just to clarify one more thing, going back to the homestead exemption. Now, it seems like the only way to successfully implement a homestead exemption, whether it be a percentage of tax assessed value or a fixed dollar amount, would ultimately result in increasing the commercial tax rate on businesses. Is that correct?
Almost certainly, because if you're, if you're dealing with the same tax need, and you're reducing the taxes paid by some portion, half, let's say, for sake of argument, half of your residential property owners, you have to raise the taxes somewhere else. So it's going to be the seasonal folks and the commercial folks who pay more.
But I think, Rory, if I remember correctly, your original thought process might have been from segmenting seasonal homes potentially from year-long residences. So in that case, you know, it would definitely impact the commercial, but it would impact the commercial side less, if you were doing it in that capacity.
That's right. And the way that Narragansett deals with that is they bifurcated their residential and commercial tax rates. So you could create a new tax rate for commercial, but again, it's always going to be higher, because that's the way things tend to work, and I think it's problematic. I, it could work, but I think it's problematic.
Part of me feels like, in that regard, if you're going to, I think it would be unfair to tax people that are going to technically utilize our services less, if they're seasonal, as an example. And just the fact that they're not year-long residences is, I don't think it's fair for them to pay more money than people that are year-long residences in our town. I think that can create some issues as well. But that's just my personal opinion.
I didn't do a whole, a whole search, but there is litigation in this area. I mean, this is something that people, you know, complain about when you're trying to export the taxes to seasonals and to commercials. When the pain is too great, people have sued. Now, I haven't looked at the cases, I don't know the results, I just haven't had a chance.
I just want to make one comment before we go, and I just want to acknowledge Trish, this is her last meeting with us?
No. Trish has agreed to continue on through the end of the budget cycle. She graciously has agreed to do so, and will be staying on as a part-time employee for as long as East Greenwich will allow her to do so.
Books.
Yeah.
Well, I'm happy to hear that you'll be with us...
At her current rate, yeah.
I'm happy to hear that you'll be with us through the, through the end of the budget process. Thank you, we value your expertise.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Somebody's second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think we actually need it.